Good afternoon and welcome to the first meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission as well the fiscal year 2020. Commissioner, I'm sorry, please silence your cell phones if you are appearing before the commission today, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your names. If you're testifying on any matter, agenda, please come forward, be sworn in by Ms. Hori, introduce yourself and spell your name. With that being said, commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the forty-third meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes of the forty-third meeting are approved. Let's move into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number one nine dash one five six three eight from two eight eight five DH Management LLC. Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Terry Lee, authorized agent and counsel for the applicant. This is the final public hearing on the transfer and Commissioner Miascher at the preliminary hearing had some questions about the whereabouts of the liquor license and why it wasn't submitted in a timely manner and if Commissioner wants me to address that, I'm happy to do so.
Yes, okay, so let us go through the formalities first, as Commissioner Miascher will recommend. Ms. Hori.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application and for the record, a summary of the June thirteenth plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioners Ganabon and Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Let me start. So, Mr. Lee, thank you for inviting the question. I did have some questions and concerns at the preliminary hearing, if you could elaborate in response to them.
Yeah, so the issue there is the underlying hotel liquor license was supported by a lease from the owner of the land and the lesssee of the hotel, which was Diamond Head Management LLC, which is an affiliated company of Aston Hotels. And then what happened was my client, the applicant here, through an affiliate, ended up buying the hotel, but also the fee interest in the land. And so that underlying ground lease, or that underlying lease that Aston had, was terminated effective December fifteenth of last year. So, under the statute, when that underlying lease was terminated, that effectively terminated the liquor license. And upon that termination, the liquor license should have been surrendered to the Liquor Commission, and that was not done. I do want to advise the commissioners and the staff that notwithstanding the termination by operation of law of the liquor license on December fifteenth, the actual operations, the liquor operations had already stopped because the only use of the liquor license, even though it was hotel license, was for the restaurant that was there, and that restaurant operation closed before that date. So, yes, it is a, you know, violation in terms of surrendering the license, and I'm sure the staff will follow up accordingly, but, you know, I just wanted to advise you that it's not like they were operating, you know, illegally without, I mean, operating the liquor operations without the license.
Very good, Commissioner.
And I've tried to find, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
This is a vicarum guard, he's the manager of the LLC, I don't think.
Good.
He's late. I apologize. So, the, the, the operations were not ongoing without liquor license. We are now seeking the transfer of that liquor license to the owner of the fee simple interest in the hotel. You approved a temporary liquor license, so they are operating under a temporary liquor license currently, and so once this transfer hopefully is approved, then we'll proceed with work.
Thank you, thank you. We will address that. You can repeat that story at a later date, but with that being said, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
One follow-up question, Mr. Lee. What was the date that the fee simple interest was acquired by your client?
It was acquired effective December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen.
So essentially?
Or December fifteenth?
December fifteenth was the close of the?
December fifteenth, I'm sorry, December fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. So concurrently with the termination of the ground lease, they closed.
Okay, and so at that point in time, your client had fees of ownership of the land and the hotel on the?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve transfer application number one nine dash one five six three eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one nine dash one five six three eight is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one six zero four five from Limon Kapole LLC. Mr. Z Bakalam.
Hello, Chair. Vice Chair's members of the commission, Emmanuel Z Bakalam here on behalf of Limon Rukusuri. I can answer any questions you may have. I know that there was an outstanding letter from the landlord that was provided today to the commission allowing for the establishment to have live music and dancing on premise. This was submitted on the landlord authorization per service and sale form by the Honolulu Liquor Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Hori.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I will confirm that we received said landlord consent and it's in the file. In this instance, we are unable to report that the applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application for failure to meet the requirements of HRS two eighty-one fifty-seven C in that the affidavit of mailing has failed to list the required mail out to a condominium, although the submitted proof of mailing indicates that the mailing was made. In this instance, the commission has two options. The first would be to cancel the public hearing. The second would be to require the applicant to take curative action with respect to the deficiency and continue the public hearing at least two weeks to July twenty-fifth. Public hearing kept open to permit the curative action or the document in this case to be available for public review for a minimum of seven business days. So, we would ask that the amended affidavit of mailing be filed no later than Monday, July fifteenth, in order to meet that seven business days requirement.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Mr. Z Bakalam?
If it's the commission's pleasure to have it pushed out so that the affidavit can be on file, that's fine. To give a little bit of background, the notice was mailed to the condo. This is the Kamakana Lee property, and they recently put the condo master as their designation for, I believe it's TMK nine one zero one six one four two. As I said, the issue was mailed, I mean, the letter was mailed. Unfortunately, there was administrative error in the tally. It was included in the lesssees and the owners instead of the condo, instead of actually being under the condo listing. So, therefore, that was the error that occurred there. However, you know, there are no individuals within the five-hundred-foot radius that really could hear or be impacted.
Very good. Commissioners?
Motion to continue application number one nine dash one six zero four five to July twenty-fifth. Public hearing kept open.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one six zero four five is continued to July twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one six zero seven six from White Sands Owner LLC.
Mr. Chair, do you have a possible comment to come as to the case of this?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Next to me, Commissioner Christina O'Hira, authorized agent for the applicant. Next to me is Benjamin Rafter. He's the general manager of the White Sands. His last name is spelled R-A-F-T-E-R.
Thank you.
We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Ms. Hori.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received nine written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application and for the record, a summary of the May ninth plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Ganabon prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Christina O'Hira, have you had the opportunity to look at the protests?
Yes, so Ben will address them more directly, but so generally, you know, I read the letters. I do feel the majority of them were actually directed at the Honolulu Tavern, which I realize is a separate issue maybe for the commission to look into, but as a practical matter, like I said, Ben will get into the details, but the hotel actually has been using their own security to ward off drug dealers that have been hanging out on No'ho'nani. They actually successfully removed a couple drug dealers that were hanging out and selling drugs by the new stands. And they also have been, you know, because the hotel's business is guests and guests need to feel safe, so the hotel is very interested in keeping the area noise-free for their guests and keeping the area crime-free because no one wants to stay at a hotel, you know, where they could get stabbed on the street. I think one of the lawyers had mentioned a possible stabbing outside of the tavern, but I'll let Ben go into the more specifics for you.
Yeah, I have, yes, I have all, all of the letters, and they all more or less say the same thing, which is disturbance every evening from Honolulu Tavern at the Hawaiian King, presence of the Honolulu Tavern at four seventeen No'ho'nani. The, we already have the Honolulu Tavern when, and there was a melee in the street when people left the Honolulu Tavern. I think they're all more or less say the same thing. And what we've done, we've invested over seven million dollars renovating the White Sands, which is next door to the Honolulu Tavern and near the building where the complaint letters have come from. We've added security at night. We've added cameras facing not only our property, but the street. There was one of the green magazine racks in front of the hotel, and that's where people were placing drugs, and we've gotten the city to repair the magazine rack and fix it and pointed cameras at it, and we've added lighting to the hotel. In this case, what we're doing is not a street-facing tavern. We're doing a food-forward restaurant in the hotel. We're partnering with FET from downtown Chinatown area who is here with us today, and FET has won multiple Alima and Haleiina awards, as well as run a successful operation without any complaints from, or, sorry, any violations from the Liquor Commission. So, I think what we're doing here is bringing a restaurant and a hotel operation to clean up the block versus what's being addressed is problems on the block from a separate business.
Mr. Rafter, the seven million, or approximate seven million in construction renovations, that's for the hotel as a, as a whole?
Yes.
And what's the intended guests in this restaurant liquor establishment? Is it the hotel guests, members of the public, both?
It's both. I mean, primarily it's function for hotel guests, but it is both ideally. The hotel historically has been, or at least for the last ten to twenty years, it was on expired ground lease, kind of the ninety-nine dollar a night budget Waikiki Hotel. We're bringing it up to, from budget to upscale, maybe upper mid-scale, not three hundred dollars a night, but probably targeting one hundred and seventy-nine to one hundred and ninety-nine dollar a night range.
Okay, thank you.
One question, what is the occupancy of the hotel?
The occupancy now, most of the rooms are under renovation, but the intended occupancy is?
Understood, understood. But once completed, what will the occupancy allow?
It runs, it'll probably run eighty-five percent occupancy and it has ninety-five rooms.
And that would be how many guests?
Two, assuming one and a half per room, we're probably looking at having hundred and forty to hundred and sixty guests.
Very good, thank you.
So this is more like a small boutique hotel operation?
Correct, yep.
You also have a pool bar as well?
Correct.
And that operation is run by folks or?
It's run in partnership with, with FET, and the restaurant is actually around the pool bar. And then during the evening, we have an internal area that used to be general managers. This hotel's very old, so it has a general manager suite, and the traffic goes in there in the evening to mitigate noise.
So, the hotel license will cover the pool bar?
Correct.
Right. And, sir, would you come forward, please, sit up, introduce yourself, seeing where you're going to be involved in this?
Hi, Chuck Bussler, B-U-S-S-L-E-R. My wife and I have a restaurant in Chinatown called FET. We've won Best New Restaurant from different media sources. We're a farm-to-table restaurant. We partner with about sixty-five local farms here in town, or on the island. We also have a project with Hawaiian Airlines that we don't sell alcohol, and it's called Lunchbox at their corporate office, and then we're partnering with them at their, their new hangar that the state opened last year. So, this project here, we'll be running all F and B inside, so we'll be the managers in the sense that Ben will be controlling that aspect.
You will be a vendor for the hotel?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be, the hotel will be the employee.
The hotel will?
Yeah.
Hold the responsibility for any violation?
Yes.
That happened in the liquor area?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I got to circle back on it. So, security is only offered at night? Is it only at night?
No, security's twenty-four hours a day, or, sorry, security will be twenty-four hours a day when the renovation's completed. Previously, there was no security at night.
There was no security?
And I didn't see if there was any parking. I could be wrong here. Was there, is there a parking structure or anything?
There is parking, I don't know the count of parking spaces off the top of my head, but there's parking front-facing the hotel.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six zero seven six.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one six zero seven six is approved. Good luck, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have Commissioner Lee back? Yes. Thank you. I thought it was called Fette. I don't know.
It happens.
Okay. Calling agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one six one one seven from Istanbul Restaurant, Mr. Z Bakalam.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair's members of the commission, Emmanuel Z Bakalam here on behalf of Istanbul Restaurant LLC as the authorized representative. I can answer any question you may have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hori.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application and for the record, a summary of the May ninth plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Ganabon prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six one one seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one six one one seven is approved.
Thank you.
What a coincidence, Mr. Z Bakalam. Calling agenda item number five of the public hearing. This is application number one nine dash one six two seven nine from MNSDBA ABC Stores.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is LaVala Romualdo, R-O-M-U-A-L-D-O, and to my left is Scott Shimogawa, S-H-I-M-O-G-A-W-A. He's the Executive Vice President and Director of MNSBO.
Thank you. Ms. Hori.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six two seven nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one six two seven nine is approved.
Good luck.
Moving into the special license applications, agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one six nine one four from Hawaii Pacific University. Can we have a call, Mr. Sato, please? I know, you're the alumni, we're picture professor. Okay, we'll move this to the end of the agenda. They may be running late, might be doing some extra sessions over there. So, let's go to agenda item number seven, and that is application number one nine dash one six nine nine zero from Kids Fit Foundation.
Hello, my name is J.J. Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N, and I'm here representing the?
Very good, okay. Commissioners?
Mr. Johnson, your name is not on anything that makes you authorized. We have a Peter Murphy, we have, and they're all mainland addresses?
Yeah, I actually came in a couple days ago and turned that, that one form in that has been listed as the authorized.
You're authorized. Yeah, I'm gonna have to.
All right, okay, so?
That's okay, we can?
I came, I came in like two days ago.
And Joe Evans authorized it?
I think it was, one paper I did not print out. I can't remember who authorized it.
The only?
Might have been Peter Murphy.
Peter Murphy, okay. The only reason why I'm asking is I was trying to follow, follow the paper trail from Kids Fit, being in the mainland, to how it's being sponsored here and who's really in charge of the event and responsible.
Yeah.
So, you're locally here?
Yes.
Okay, and you've done this type of event before?
Yes, it's called the Spartan Race out of Kolo Ranch, it's an obstacle course race. This will be our eighth year.
Okay, so we're aware of the Spartan Race, so?
Yeah.
But this is a little different where it's Kids Fit Foundation.
The Kids Fit Foundation is a nonprofit organization that raises awareness to adolescent youth, and they put on these fundraisers basically to raise money so they can, you know, get athletes, adolescent youth, you know, into fitness programs and that kind of stuff around the country. Spartan Race International out of Boston runs about fifty races a year on the mainland and a whole bunch of them around the world.
So, this is their first time in Hawaii?
No, this is their third year.
Kids Fit?
The third year for Kids Fit for this, this event.
For this event at Kolo?
At Kolo Ranch.
But their first year of requesting a liquor permit?
You know, in the past, Chair, what I've been told, I used to, I actually used to be the licensee for Spartan Race. I'm also the race director for Honolulu Marathon, so anyhow. But I was told that in the past, they didn't have to come before the commission to get temporary. August of last year, they, no one came because I, I wouldn't be the person to come because of the local rep for Spartan Race. So, we were required the last two years to come before you guys to get a temporary liquor permit. This is the first year that we've actually had to do this in the eight years that we've done it.
If I could just, Mr. Johnson's authorized agent form is in the file, okay?
It is in the file.
Yes.
Okay, so you are the authorized agent?
Yeah.
To answer your question, my chair.
I guess because it's a special nonprofit, you know, so the nonprofit has to basically show proof to us that they are a nonprofit and how they're running their events.
So, your, your past years having this event, same layout?
Yeah, it changes a little bit, but it's in Low Camp and Kolo Ranch, if you're familiar with Kauai Valley. The layout's basically the same. We change the obstacles around a little bit each year, but the festival area, where this is gonna be held is pretty much the same.
So, the final area that you presented on the fact that it has been the same?
Yeah.
Every year?
Last couple of years, yeah.
Same concept where you come in, check IDs?
Yes.
Go to the tents and?
Yes.
And out?
Yes.
Well, I think our concern for the safety and well-being of the general public, because this is a one-day event, it's one day and you're gone.
Yeah.
Should something happen, we're going to be running around the island trying to track people down. So, we want to make sure that you have everything in order to ensure this commission that we will have a safety, excuse me, a safe event with no issues at the event and when the patrons that are drinking leave the event, because as you know, that's a very, very hazardous highway, especially entering and exiting.
Just, just to reassure you a little bit, typically, it's not really a, it's a festival area, but it's, this is a byproduct of what's happening in the festival area, and typically it's the athletes who've done a half marathon worth of obstacles, you know, in the valley in that heat, have one beer and they're gone. So, they're not, they're really not sitting around, you know, partying. It's more of a flow-through type event.
Understood.
But being the local rep, and my reputation is on the?
Correct.
On the hook too. I'm not gonna let anything happen. And we're very good friends with the Morgan family, and we wanted to care of their property as well, so I can assure you.
So, are you in any way affiliated with Mr. Spencer?
Spencer?
Who holds it?
Pardon?
I said, I guess not.
He holds it against, very similar.
Oh, oh, at Mahekeke Challenge?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, I know other Mahekeke, and we kind of coexisted the last, I think that they're going on their seventh year. Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, I have a couple of more specific questions on your security plan, and thank you for providing us with a document that says that, but what kind of number of security personnel will you have for the whole event and specifically for the area where alcohol will be searched?
Yeah, I can't really answer that, to be honest with you, because I'm not the one that's actually putting it together. I'm just representing the organization so that I can get those numbers for you, like the actual numbers.
What about HPD Special Duty?
Yeah, we have those, those guys are, we hire them for highway, you know, to get the people safely onto the highway and off the highway so we can create counterflow lanes. We also have HPD roaming to Special Duty doing the event.
In your prior experience, what's your best estimate of security personnel that you've?
Last year, I'd say there was probably about ten in around just the, the area there, just the festival area.
Moving to executive session.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in the executive session.
Before I do, Mr. Johnson, can you try to find out the numbers of security personnel while we're in session?
Okay. You want me to stay here?
We are now back on the official record. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Did you get that information that we requested?
Yes, I texted them, they said it's, they have four checking IDs and six roaming around the area.
Okay.
From there.
Okay.
Just so the record is clear, you're talking about security personnel assigned to this event, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, any further questions?
Yes, um, Mr. Johnson, so, there's, there's a bit of concern, especially because the organizers are from the mainland, and they haven't done an event here, and they're assigning you to do this event, or I don't know what your position is as far as doing this event, you're running it?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm actually the guy organizing it, and I've been doing it, this will be my eighth year. They're, they're basically the crew, because they're from the headquarters, so they own the event, but I'm the, I'm the person, the race director, I'm the one organizing.
Okay, so if, if that is the position, then we are gonna request that, um, you need to have Joe Evans, who is the president of Kids Fit Foundation, to revise the supplemental information and put specifically in number ten, put your name, that you're gonna be in charge for this event.
Are you talking about the, the race itself, or are you talking about the?
Everything, so at the end of the day, at the end of the day, specifically for liquor operations, it's, if there's a problem, who do we see and who is responsible? It can't be somebody in Illinois or wherever, Boston, wherever you guys are gonna be, so we need somebody here that's gonna ensure and make sure that this is run properly, specifically to the liquor service.
And what we're referring to is this form supplemental information for nonprofit liquor license. Right now, presently, item ten, person in charge of the event is listed as Mr. Peter Murphy, and we would like that to be you.
Is Peter Murphy even gonna be here?
Yes.
Okay, so he's gonna be here for the race?
Yes.
Okay, for all three days?
Yes.
And who else from this organization? What about John Morgan? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, Joe Evans?
Joe, John, John's the owner.
Yeah, Joe Evans, how about Joe Evans?
Uh, yeah, they'll be here, Sean, um, McGuire will be here.
McGuire?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those guys will be here.
Okay, so.
That, they're, they're handling the, the, uh, Kids Fit fundraising portion of that. And then I'm, I'm the guy that puts the whole obstacles together, the racing, all that kind of stuff.
So they're basically taking in the money, doing the distributions and all that stuff out, right?
Yes.
And they're gonna be, do you know who the vendors are who are gonna be providing the liquor?
I don't know.
Okay, so, being that you're, if you're gonna be taking that responsibility on number ten, then we're inclined to continue this agenda item, and you can come back and you can make us aware of the, the unknowns that are not known, right?
Okay.
Okay, so you're okay with that, you need, one week is good? How much time did you need?
Okay, one week.
Before the race, yeah?
Oh, one week before the race?
No, 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 what?
No, no, one week from today.
Today?
Next Thursday.
Uh, what's that date? Anybody can count it?
Eighteenth.
Or the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth would be better for me, because I'm.
Okay, all right.
Supposed to be off-island.
All righty, so, my motion is to.
So let me just be clear here, so you want, you need my name on as the responsible person?
Yep.
And what was the second thing?
You will be the person in charge of the event?
Right.
And you are supposed to know all the details of the event, so you would know who your vendors are, who's gonna be providing the beer, what security company you're gonna be employing, you know, you claim there's, they're, they're claiming there's forty, ten, four ID checkers, six roaming, all those details, yeah? And then you'll, you, you said there's H P D, just aware, yeah, you're aware of the whole.
Right.
Right, so you'll, you'll get that information from the mainland. All right, so, um, sorry. My motion is to, um, continue, agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one six nine nine zero to July twenty-fifth.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one six nine nine zero is continued to July twenty-fifth. Correct?
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's call agenda item number eight, uh, application number one nine dash one six nine nine one from Lani Kuhu Kula Culture Institute. Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you. Fellow Commissioners, my name is Kayla Lloyd, representing the Lani Kuhu Kula Culture Institute. Excuse me. So I, I, I provide a little bit of a summary ahead of time about the event, how big, where, what we're doing with respect to security. So I'm happy to take any questions, so I can go, I can summarize any.
Okay, very good. This is for a special, uh, uh, beer and wine license on August tenth for a Hawaiian culture event. We are all very familiar with, um, the institute and the area, right? So Commissioners, with that being said, do you have any questions?
Just one question. The, you're, are you proposing a beer garden type of, um, what, how are you proposing this?
People pay for the general admission to come in, it's a twenty-dollar ticket price, and we're selling this beer and wine. We're gonna, we're gonna wristband folks coming in, we're using three off-duty H P D officers to do that, it's the same thing we did last year. So, uh, so they go to this, it's, it's a one-tent, it's not a contained beer garden as I, as I imagine what you, I think you mean. So they can purchase, but we have a, so they purchase from this one area, just the one tent, but there's a, it's, a lot of people know we have three different phases, so it's, this event is contained to phase two, it's the area in the middle. So they have to stay within that, and it's the only event going on, on the property that evening. Nothing going on in phase one or phase three. Got the answer to your question.
Yeah, and then, um, just for the record, you had an event last year as well?
We did.
Any incidents?
This is like, this is the seventh year we're doing it, but it's got, it's gotten more popular, it's gotten bigger. And then we get the, the beer and wine donated from two different distributors, Paradise Beverages and, um, Johnson Brothers that delivers the wine. But we have two food vendors, that they sell small plates between five and eight dollars, Monkey Pot and Roy's, oh, you know? And we've been doing that the last few years, working with those folks.
Well, it seems like it's gonna be, you have a good lineup of entertainment.
Yeah, we have Kimi Miners, the headliner, we also have the, the Halau that, uh, uh, they won the Salo Hula this year, and two years ago. And also, yeah, Tracy and Kelly Lopez who won last year's.
Very good. Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six nine nine one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one six nine nine one is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody from Hawaii Pacific University?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we received information from the applicant that they wish to have the matter rescheduled as there is a projected date change. So I guess I'll ask the commission to continue to next available.
Very good. Commissioners, can we go to calling agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one six nine one four from Hawaii Pacific University?
Motion to continue, application number one nine dash one six nine one four to next available.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one six nine one four is continued to the next available date. Let's move on to preliminary hearings, agenda item number nine, transfer application number one nine dash one five one five five from Imperial, uh, Impreso Restaurant Consulting, Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. To my right is the applicant, Fabrizio Avali, he is present with Council of Wings, and there are no additions to the, or changes to the investigator's report.
Commissioner?
Okay, motion to approve transfer application number one nine dash one five one five five.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, transfer application number one nine dash one five one five five is approved. Calling agenda item number ten.
Thank you.
Application number one nine dash one five six eight zero from Blazing Wings Inc.
Good afternoon, Chairman O'Donnell, members of the commission, Ms. Ry, Newton Chu on behalf of the applicant, Blazing Wings. To my right is Kyler Buchanan, the district manager, and I previously provided this going to the secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Lu.
Two changes?
Yes, sure.
On the investigator's report, uh, I did submit a revised drawing, uh, to the investigator, Yasut Takeda, today. It turns out that the drawing will have an additional space for an office at the back, uh, which will result in the increase of about a hundred square feet, maybe less. So I wanna note that for, on his report, that's, uh, page, uh, page three of his report on details of premises, so that number of sixty-four four eight may go up a little bit for the drawings we're submitting. Okay, and then the second change is, uh, it, it's not, uh, set forth in the business plan, but I just wanna go on record that of Lofa Wild Wings, you provide tablets, we've received approval, uh, by your commission before, that we provide those for customers while they wait, and it contains some games, and we've asked in the past that you waive any requirement that we update any serial numbers, uh, over the course of replacing those tablets. We're not sure we're gonna use those when the store opens in October, November, but, uh, we just wanna disclose that in advance now to make it part of the record.
So you have these, um, issues, uh, cleared out for the, um, public hearing?
Yes.
Commissioners, do you have any further questions? Move it forward.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five six eight zero.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one five six eight zero is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one five eight eight seven from Pacific Suites LLC. Robert Lu.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ms. Ry, Robert Lu, on behalf of Pacific Suites LLC, doing business at High Stakes, present to my right, Mr. Sean Tateno, he is the area supervisor, first name S H A W N, last name T A T E N O. At this time, we have nothing to add to this case's report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five eight eight seven.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one five eight eight seven is approved.
Thank you so much.
More good food coming to Congress. Calling agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one six four five two from Pacific Suites LLC, D B A Hawaii State.
Robert Lu, Robert Lu, on behalf of High Stakes, present to my right, my right, Mr. Sean Tateno, area supervisor, advisor, at this time we have nothing to add to this case's report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
We finally find out what's happening with that large space.
Right, city gateway.
Yes.
Build it up.
So, um, there's been a lot of rumors flying around about it, and I'm glad that it is, um, a full land, and that there is gonna be, um, this big case there, so it is, I can tell my daughter that her rumor is untrue. These are good. Okay, uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four five two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one six four five two is approved.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to temporary license applications, agenda item number thirteen, applications number one nine dash one six five zero four for, from, let's do this market.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Ross Shinzato, authorized agent. And to my right is Tessie Okouchi, T E S S I E, O K O U C H I. She will be the registered manager for, for the business.
Thank you. Commissioners?
We have no changes to the report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Just wanna make sure you folks are cautious about selling to minors, yeah? This is a retail establishment, correct?
Correct.
We've had issues in the past, places where they're selling to minors, whatever service, so please be very, very aware.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six five zero four.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fourteen, application number one nine dash one six five zero four is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number fourteen, application number one nine dash one six seven zero eight from Y U Grocery and Liquor. Y U Grocery and Liquor, yes, sir, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Donald Stafford, S P A F F O R E, authorized agent for the applicant. And to my right is Young Hoem, Y O H N G A E, U M, the president of the applicant.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six seven zero eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fourteen, application number one nine dash one six seven zero eight is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number one nine dash one six eight six one from K D M Enterprises LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Ross Shinzato, authorized agent. Uh, we are requesting, uh, four-week continuance for this matter.
How long?
Four weeks.
Four weeks? Do we have a date specific, Ms. Ry?
That August one?
That's fine.
Motion to continue application.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm.
August second?
August eighth.
Eighth, okay.
Right. Um. One, two, three, four, five. Yeah, August eighth.
Okay, motion to continue, application number one nine dash one six eight six one to August eighth.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifteen, application number one nine dash one six eight six one is continued to August eighth, two thousand nineteen. Thank you. Calling agenda item number sixteen.
Do you wanna take, do you wanna take up twenty?
Ross, we'll, we'll take it quick.
Yes, related, okay. I don't have it marked on my, so that is number twenty? Yeah, okay, very good. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty out of order, request number one nine dash one six nine five four from Mr. Ross Shinzato, authorized agent on behalf of K D M Enterprises.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Ross Shinzato, authorized agent, and we would like to request a four-week continuance for this also.
Motion to continue, request number one nine dash one six nine five four to August eighth.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty, uh, is, uh, request number one nine dash one six nine five four is continued to August eighth, two thousand nineteen. Thank you. Thank you, let's go backwards to agenda item number, help me, well?
Sixteen, yeah.
Uh, sixteen, of course, I knew that. Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number one nine dash one six nine four two from Esat Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mia Obsiana on behalf of the applicant, seated to my right is Jeff Haudishaw, he is the president of the applicant.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners? Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six nine four two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one six one zero five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, request number one nine dash one six one six five. Calling agenda item number eighteen, request number one-nine dash one-six-one-six-five from Shaka Spirits LLC.
You missed one, no, seventeen.
I think you read the wrong approval for-
It's the transient vessel application.
We approved agenda item number seventeen, correct?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Did sixteen.
But commissal will be-
No, no, you approved number sixteen.
We're on seventeen now.
He read the number wrong.
Commissioner Lee's saying that you have to re-speak-
I think you read the application number-
I read the application, okay, so let me try this again then, right? Calling agenda item number seventeen, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-zero-five from Ocean Journeys LLC.
Aloha, Chairman and Commissioners. No changes to the investigation report. I'm Richard Holland, sorry, Richard Holland, the president of Ocean Journeys LLC.
Commissioners? Little music and beer and wine, I'll turn a wine eye. As the sun goes down, you're not going to be swimming with the sharks.
No, we will not.
Okay, very good.
I'm not serving any dolphins either.
No. Definitely not.
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-six-one-zero-five.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seventeen, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-zero-five is approved, correct?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, request number one-nine dash one-six-one-six-five from Shaka Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, requesting, Rendel Kuva, K-U-V-A, requesting conversion from LLC to C Corporation.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number one-nine dash one-six-one-six-five.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, request number one-nine dash one-six-one-six-five is approved. Calling agenda item number nineteen, request number one-nine dash one-seven-zero-zero-zero from Dave and Buster's of Hawaii. Mr. Chu.
Good afternoon, Chair O'Donnell, members of the commission, me and Chu on behalf of the licensee, Dave and Buster's of Hawaii Inc. To my right is Andrew Shimabukuro, general manager. And just thought I, should I summarize our request?
Let's hear what we're going to do.
Okay, so-
Lay it out for us right on top of the table.
Okay, so one of the newer items available at bars and restaurants are Jell-O shots. Now, Jell-O is a trademark name, so I should, maybe I shouldn't say Jell-O shots, but I just won't let you, gelatin shots, perhaps. Okay, so the, Dave and Buster's has over a hundred and thirty stores nationwide, and nine stores out of the company were chosen as possible test markets for this new product. It's a three-to-four-month test run to see whether this product will be something that they want to include on their menu, see how it goes. We understand there might be some concerns about a product that's maybe youthful in nature, and so the precautions the company has taken in looking at this product is, they're smaller, so it's like half a shot, it's a half ounce of liquor, and if that's disclosed, they're limited to one product per customer. So it's not like someone can pour five and get intoxicated on these shots, so it's one per customer per night, so it's, we have our own limiting factor involved. And so we're asking for your approval.
Okay, Commissioners?
What's your process for discarding of the product?
Discarding, it's a-
Any extras?
Plastic?
No, so if you have extras left, also you folks are requesting to pre-make them, correct?
Yes.
So say you pre-make, you know, five hundred, but only three hundred gets sold.
The shelf life is what, three?
Three and a half days.
Three and a half days.
Okay, so what is your folks' process to ensure that you're not selling old product? How are you going to keep count of how much? Because I used to work in services and behind bars, and those are very easy for your employees to consume as well.
Sure.
So how are you folks going to manage those two issues?
Each bar will be fitted with an actual specific refrigerator, it's a displayed refrigerator. It only holds a set amount of Jell-O shots, and once we get through that, we won't be replenishing. And the majority of the Jell-O shots that we make on a day-to-day basis will be held in a lot cooler on the walk-in and back.
And how are you going to ensure that they're not sold or consumed after the three-day shelf?
Oh, it'll be just operated just like food, it'll be shelf-tagged and day-tagged, so we know, you know, when it's about to expire, or we won't make, in the beginning, obviously, we're not going to make a ton. It's just a trial phase, see how many we can sell.
Thank you. I have a question. Where, where are you going to be serving this? Is it on the upstairs bar side or on the actual arcade floor?
The actual, the, there's two refrigerators that we have, and one will be on the entrance, the main floor. We won't have a refrigerator in the arcade area because there's just not enough room, and then we'll have one up on the rooftop.
So it won't be served on the arcade?
We won't have a refrigerator for it.
But, so are we saying that it's not going to be served on the arcade floor? Is that what we're saying?
It will, it'll be, if somebody asks, it'll be offered, you know, somebody, if a guest asks for it.
So my concern is, the arcade floor is predominantly all children with their families and, you know, adults. Jell-O is Jell-O, right, to kids? So, you know, whether an adult orders it or not, is it ensured that, is it the type where you deliver the Jell-O shot and the server waits until they take it and they take the container back? Or you leave it on the table and it's open? Because Jell-O is Jell-O, I mean, you know what I mean? I'm speaking on a practical point of view on that, because I don't have a problem with it being on the upper deck, but on the arcade level where it's, like I said, there's more kids than adults actually on top of that floor.
Sure.
So I'm-
What we don't want to see is a kid sees a thing of Jell-O and just eats it off of a table.
Correct. Personally, I think we would have the same restrictions that we have currently on our, say, our snow cone drinks, which also have alcohol in it. So we are very aware of, you know, kids drinking alcoholic beverages, especially with the lights and the gummy worms and everything that we use for the non-alcoholic beverages, so we do, staff is trained to look out for that type of issues that we have with kids wanting to drink it.
Okay, uh, motion to approve, request number one-nine dash one-seven-zero-zero-zero.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, request number one-nine dash one-seven-zero-zero-zero is approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, thank you, ma'am. Request number one-nine dash one-six-nine-six-four from Neo Gota Esquire. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neo Gota, appearing on behalf of Lucius LLC. Just for the record, this is the former eating house, eighteen forty-nine, in Kapolei, and my understanding is the prior license was surrendered in April of this year.
Okay, motion to approve, request number one-nine dash one-six-nine-six-four.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, request number one-nine dash one-six-nine-six-four is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two, request number one-nine dash one-seven-zero-three-eight from Keith Kyuchi Esquire, on behalf of Terry H. Corporation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi.
Mr. Chairman, may I recuse myself for this matter due to conflict?
Thank you.
So Commissioners, I've laid it out, I think, pretty well in four pages, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. I try to be as comprehensive as possible, so the commissioner is aware of all of the circumstances.
Mr. Kyuchi, I'm sorry, Mr. Kyuchi, I read this four times.
Thank you.
Four times. And I did a chart on it, because I'm a visual person and I had to understand the flow and what we're doing here. So overall, we're talking about the bartender of the past business. Terry H. Corporation has now purchased-
Purchased the assets of Lap Lounge, correct?
And purchased, and is now operating a non-alcohol strip.
That is also correct.
However, the lease on this is set to expire as well, so this is a short-term-
This is a lease that will expire by its own term by the end of next year, because the landlord intends to redevelop the whole premises. I've had extensive conversations with the landlord's agent and the landlord's attorney. And there were, there were extensive conversations with Ms. Hune, with the landlord. This is not a situation where the landlord is an issue. The landlord is willing to terminate the lease, the commission denies the request, and right now she's paying half rent. She went in knowing that this was the situation. But in talking to both Ms. Hune and the landlord, I think we all agreed to bring this in front of the commission and have it determined, and then she would, you know, act accordingly. So that's why I put in as much as I can into this.
I was following you all the way until, I was a little disappointed with the statement of Terry H. Corporation having an undue hardship on this issue, knowing she purchased it without any-
She did, she did, and I'll be honest with you, that's, that's what she did. So the good cause and the undue hardship would be, only she can't recover the money, but what you're saying is that's her own fault. Not going to disagree with that. I mean, this was something that she discussed with owner of Lap Lounge, and I think you're absolutely correct. So that was explained to her. I don't think it's, to be honest, I don't think it's this commission's responsibility to get her money back. It's not what this is for.
Right.
I've told her that.
Right.
I think that she has, she has to understand her own consequences. So from that, but that's the only hardship that exists, because I can't tell you the hardship exists with the landlord, because I've talked to the landlord. The landlord is willing to work with the tenant under the circumstances. As it is, she's paying half rent.
And she's still in business at a top rate.
She's still in business, she can pay half rent as long as she wants. If the commission denies this request, she can terminate the lease. The landlord is actually very open in saying, okay, we'll let, we'll let her do this. She wants to stay in and pay half rent, that's fine. She wants to get out of the lease, that's fine. So there's no hardship with the landlord, so I can't represent that.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we're now in executive session. Okay, thank you. We are now back on the official record. Commissioners?
Mr.- My motion is to deny request number one-nine dash one-seven-zero-three-eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, request number one-nine dash one-seven-zero-three-eight is denied. Thank you, Mr. Kyuchi. Calling agenda item number twenty-three. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, request number two-zero dash two-zero-zero-one-three from E-K-C International Hawaii. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Mamoru Tatemori, spell is M-A-M-O-R-U-T-E-M-O-R-I. I'm vice president of E-K-C International Hawaii Inc.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
To withdraw.
Okay. Motion to withdraw, request number-
Approved.
Oh, I'm sorry, approve request number two-zero dash two-zero-zero-one-three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three, request number two-zero dash two-zero-zero-one-three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-four, request number two-zero dash two-zero-zero-one-six from Ping Kwong Chen. How did I do?
Pretty good.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Wong, I represent I R E M L O P.
Hello, I am Ping Kwong Chen, C-H-E-N, representing I R E M L O P.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number two-zero dash two-zero-zero-one-six.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-four, request number two-zero dash two-zero-zero-one-six is approved. Good luck, gentlemen, good luck. Agenda item number twenty-five, I-H-W Spirits Ache, DBA Island Vintage Organic and Wine Bar Restaurant Beer and Wine License. Mr. Luke.
Deputy Captain Paul Kang is president of customer Wayne Luke. The, the plans that has been submitted is correct, we have no changes, and the zoning clearance has been submitted.
Very good. Commissioner Lee, any comment? Check with our resident architect.
Mr. Kang, you recall, this is, has been approved four times to, he still is the approval.
You need an approval.
No, there's no action required, right?
No, there is, because if the floor plan that is before you is different from what was approved at the public, so you need to approve the new floor plan.
Okay, so we would, the motion would be to approve the revised floor plan?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. Okay, motion to revise the new floor plan for application number one-eight dash one-two-zero-two-three.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five, application number one-eight dash one-two-zero-two-three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Arts Culture Merchants, et cetera. DBA Arts Culture Merchants. This is a post-event report. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, the Chair Commissioners, Marty Simgen, on behalf of Arts Culture Merchants, et cetera. I believe Ms. Reed had sent in the written report on June twenty-ninth. Everything went pretty, fairly smoothly. We shut down the streets at seven-thirty, the alcohol, or the beer and wine tent opened at eight, as well as the music. The music was done by ten. The bar was shut down by eleven, and all alcohol was off the street by midnight. No complaints from security or HPD. They don't feel we need any more officers. And everything's, just going on pretty smoothly for us.
Did you see any noise complaints?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
No action is required.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have a- Can I have a, um, type of action for agenda items number twenty-seven through thirty-three?
Mr. Chairman, motion for the adoption of finding of fact decision and order for agenda items twenty-seven through thirty-three inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of findings of fact, decision and order, agenda items number twenty-seven through thirty-three inclusive our rule. Moving into adjudication.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the commission, Ms. Heuai, Deputy Cooperation Counsel Monica Choi on the record for the prosecution and all agenda items number twenty, uh, I'm sorry, thirty-four through forty-five.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Club Nine O Four.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairmembers, Commissioner Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is Chun, C.H.U.N.Y. Goldman. She is the president and, president and director of Club Nine O Four.
Thank you.
Chair, you took off the comment recused.
Thank you. Commissioner Maishiro?
We waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-four, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first-time violation for the failure to file an accurate report of gross liquor sales report. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Kyuchi.
Yeah, what happened here is they failed to report all of the complimentary drinks. I talked to the auditor, Ms. Ray. Um, that has been corrected for this fiscal year. This, this is for the previous fiscal year, which was seventeen eighteen.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-four, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Can we have, um, are you?
No, I'm doing, uh, also, I'm doing thirty-five, thirty-five through forty-one. And to let, uh, the chair know, as to thirty-five through forty-one, we are contesting forty, which is going to be a stipulated facts and just a submission of the report to the commission for their consideration. But the rest will be, uh, no contest plea, and there's going to be one charge along the way that's going to be dismissed.
Okay, Ms. Choi, can we hear from you?
Uh, you know, Commissioner Maishiro did not specifically recuse from items thirty-five, so I'm afraid he's going to have to come back and then go back out.
Yeah.
Right. Forty No, forty-three is mine.
Okay, so you, you have, um,
I've got
Forty, forty-one?
Wait, no.
I've got thirty-five through forty-one.
Thirty-five through forty-one.
And outside forty-three. Yeah.
I think you can recuse from, as long as you identify each agenda item that you're recusing.
Okay, should I be calling the agenda items individually?
No, that's the one.
For the record.
I, I can identify what I'm accusing from, blanket.
Yeah.
Okay, thirty-five through
Forty-one to forty-three.
And then forty-three as well.
Okay, um, before the next sentence called, Chair, I'm going to recuse due to a conflict. For the record, I'm accusing from agenda items thirty-five through forty-one and agenda item forty-two.
Thank you. All right, okay. Calling agenda item number thirty-five, correct?
Yes.
The Ginza Nightclub.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee. As to, um, number thirty-five, we've, charge one is going to be dismissed. The charges two and three, waiving of the charge and are no contest plea.
Ms. Choi, is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding is for charge number one, we, they were cited for not having a manager on duty, but apparently they did have a manager on duty. Um, for number two, it's for having unregistered employees, and this is a first offense. Uh, my recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars. For charge number three, it's for having an inadequate time card. There was the year missing and also the morning of A M. and P M. Information missing, so it's a first violation. My recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, in this instance, there was one prior warning of about five years ago, but that's it.
Okay, so, um, to, to confirm further record, uh, is, um, is charge number one dismissed?
Yes.
Okay. So we will note that charge number one has been dismissed. Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea for charges two and three. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-five, charge number two and charge number three, the no contest pleas are accepted.
Mr. Kyuchi, any comments for charges two and three?
Yes, the charge two, the employees that were not registered were all bouncers, and that has since been remedied. They are now signed up with the commission. Um, as to charge number three, there was an oversight, um, I think Ms. Choi accurately stated what was incorrect. It was, uh, incorrect date, I think in the correct time.
Okay, but it's all been corrected now?
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars and two hundred and fifty dollars for a total of six hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-five, charge number two, the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars is approved. And agenda item number thirty-five, charge number three, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved for a total of six hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Calling agenda item number thirty-six, The Ginza Nightclub Lime Light Karaoke Restaurant.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairmembers, Commissioner Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee. Waive reading of all three charges, enter no contest pleas on all three charges.
Motion to accept no contest pleas for charges one, two, and three. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-six, the no contest plea is accepted for charge number one, charge number two, and charge number three.
Ms. Choi.
Okay, for charge number one, this is a first-time violation for, in this case, an unknown female was touching, um, the private parts of another female. Uh, for charge number, I mean, my recommended fine is a thousand dollars. For charge number two, this is for nudity. This is a first-time violation. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars. And for charge number three, this is for selling liquor to a minor. It's a first-time violation. My recommended fine is a thousand dollars. For a total of twenty-five hundred dollars.
So this all occurred during an event that a promoter gave. And to give you some idea, um, which we're not, license fee's not going to do anymore. It was an eighteen-and-over event using wristbands. He realizes isn't going to work. So it wasn't that the alcohol got sold to the minor, alcohol was passed. Uh, the investigators said they saw someone passing liquor to the minor. That's what occurred, but that shouldn't happen, so the remedy, talk to Mr. Lee about it, is can't do any events like that with the promoter that are twenty-one and over. So they've got to go check the ID at the door, and that's how you prevent minors from being passed alcohol. So the first violation, the second violation are both part of a twerk contest that the promoter was doing, which ain't happening again. The first violation occurred between two customers, the second violation was a customer who got a little bit too enthusiastic during the twerk contest.
To say the least, Mr. Kyuchi.
Yeah, that's not going to happen again. This, Mr. Lee, um, after talking to the promoter, is going to continue to use the promoter, but he had a couple of conditions. One is it's got to be twenty-one and over, and no more contests of this nature, because he just has to be trouble.
So is Mr. Lee on, um, is the promoter going to help Mr. Lee with some of these penalties out of his fees?
Uh, no. I'm going to pay
I would not use that promoter.
Yeah, that's what I think is, in future problem, never to use that.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for charge one, five hundred dollars for charge two, and one thousand dollars for charge three, for a total of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-six, charge number one, the thousand doll, uh, recommended fine of a thousand dollars is approved. Uh, charge number two, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. And charge number three, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved for a total of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty-seven.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairmembers, Commissioner Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee. The officer and director of the licensee as to charge thirty-seven, waiving of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-seven, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi, this is a first-time violation for unauthorized consumption on the premises. Um, there was liquor consumed in a portion of premises that liquor was not allowed to be consumed, so my recommended fine is a thousand dollars.
Mr. Kyuchi.
The premises is kind of unusual, you know, Ms. Choi is right, there's a portion of the premises that actually is not licensed. What happened this instance is a customer went out to meet a friend to pick drinks with him. And so I've talked to Mr. Lee, since we have several bouncers that now have cards, the bouncers are going to check that and make sure the alcohol doesn't leave a certain point.
No, it's not putting the sign.
The sign also, right?
Right, the sign, right.
Cannot, the liquor cannot leave this point.
Mr. Lee, you're responsible for your customers' behavior.
Yes.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-seven, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-eight, The Ginza Nightclub Lime Light Karaoke Restaurant.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairmembers, Commissioner Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee, officer and director of the licensee. Uh, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-eight, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
Uh, this is a second-time violation for selling liquor to a minor, but for adjudication purposes, since we are just adjudicating the prior one, I'm recommending a fine of a thousand dollars.
This was, um, a different, the same promoter. The events that occurred was, were very similar, with the alcohol was passed to a minor. And that's why the remedy for Mr. Lee has to be the same, has to be twenty-one and over events only. And although I can't represent, he is no longer working with the promoter, obviously. He said he's going to think about not working with the promoter before, because the same promoter both events.
Are, are persons under, are minors allowed on the premises in normal times? Or are you folks only allowing it during these events that are
They were only allowed during the events, because normally with a, Cabaret doesn't have the same restriction, but normally he doesn't allow under twenty-one. And that's why it's going to be a twenty-one and over establishment, that's what we're preventing, so you don't have that. Because if you, if you check the ID at the door with as many bouncers as he's got, you can prevent the issue at the door. And that's the whole thing, so that's what we talked about. He's got to do the twenty-one and over, because that's the only time that minors go into establishment at all. The remedy is actually, you know, we can say it's easy, and it is, but he's got to go enforce it.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-eight, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-nine, The Ginza Nightclub Lime Light Karaoke Restaurant.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairmembers, Commissioner Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee, officer and director of the licensee. As to charges one, two, and three, we waive reading of the charge on all three charges, and we enter a no contest plea on all three charges.
Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one, two, and three. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-nine, uh, no contest plea is accepted for charge number one, charge number two, and charge number three.
Ms. Choi, your recommendations.
Miss, for charge number one, this is for the unauthorized storage of liquor. Uh, it's a first-time violation. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
I'm sorry?
Five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
And for charge number two, this is a first-time violation for having a window in an interior room of the licensed premises darkened. It was tinted. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars. For charge number three, this is for the failure to produce books and records. It's a first-time violation. I recommend five hundred dollars. And, uh, the licensee provide all the books and records requested within thirty days of the service of the decision and order.
As to the first charge, um, as I explained, there are portions of the premises that aren't licensed. And unfortunately, liquid was stored in that premises in the hallway, so we're going to get rid of that. That's a pretty easy remedy.
Does, does your client understand licensed versus unlicensed premises? And that he can come in and request to have an extension, so that perhaps these problems will not continue to occur?
He does. There's, um, I actually looked at the floor plan, that there's a specific reason I think we don't want it licensed.
Okay.
But that doesn't, I mean, he's got to monitor that, because if he's got unlicensed, then you run into the two violations.
Does he know which parts of his premises are licensed and unlicensed?
He does. He has a very good idea, because it is a very specific portion. It's a hallway. There's a very good reason after going through with him why that hallway can't be licensed. As to charge, as to the second charge, um, yeah, the tint was a little dark. It's been corrected. The tint is no longer as dark as it was, and it's not even, and Ms. Choi and I talked about this. According to the rule, it's not even, uh, a question of how dark it is. You're not supposed to have tint, period. Because you're supposed to see every seat in the room from the outside. Explain that to Mr. Lee, so that has since been corrected. As to the third charge, the subpoena was issued on January twelfth, two thousand eighteen. There were documents submitted on March twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen. If there are any additional documents needed, I'll work with, um, auditing and, uh, provide that within thirty days. My understanding is, I think all the documents were provided, but they were over two months late, and that was the issue.
You know, I, I should have Mr. San Mong Fila answer the questions about what specifically we needed.
I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear? The testimony given today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Mr. Mong Fila, can you explain to the commissioners what, what is, uh, still outstanding?
Okay, basically, um,
Could you introduce yourself first, please, for the record?
I'm sorry.
San Mong Fila, legal commission auditor.
Thank you very much.
Um, basically, the, the licensed premises, they have, um, several operators. Some of them provided the records, some of them didn't.
I'm sorry, what was that, several operators?
The, apparently they have, um, three.
Three separate areas.
Like vendors, Bora Cafe?
Three separate vendors under one license.
Right. So I was able to, um, um, collect three, I mean, two of threes.
And one vendor still missing?
One minute missing.
Do you know which vendor that is?
Well, we'll make sure we get that one vendor provided within thirty days. I'll work, I'll work with, uh, Mr. Mong Fila.
But then at the time, they didn't have it. So they didn't have it. I don't know if you're going to be able to produce it.
Thank you. All right, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge two. And the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge three, and require the licensee to provide all books and records within thirty days of the decision and order.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-nine, charge number one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Charge number two, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. And charge number three, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved, and the licensee will provide all books and records within thirty days from the receipt of the decision and order. Thank you very much. Let's call agenda item number forty?
Yes, sir.
The Ginsa nightclub, Lime Light Karaoke Restaurant.
As to agenda item number forty, Keith Kyujik for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee. We plead not guilty, deny the charge to forty. My understanding is, we're gonna submit to the commission, Ms. Choi has this, and I've already reviewed it, it is the investigative report. We can, both of us can give you a synopsis of what the issue is that the commission.
Are you gonna take, you're taking a contested matter up now, as opposed to disposing of?
You wanna put at the end, that's fine.
Yeah, we want, give everybody.
Forty-one and forty-three.
Forty-one.
And then switching clients, just to, so we don't have Commissioner Mia Sherrill coming in and out a whole bunch.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move this to the end of the agenda.
That's fine, that's fine.
We'll move that, um, the, the agenda, right?
That's fine.
And we'll take the forty-one.
Move forward to agenda item number forty-two?
Forty-one.
Uh, forty-one, okay. Calling agenda item number forty-one, the Ginsa nightclub, Lime Light Karaoke Restaurant.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission. Keith Kyujik for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee. He's the president and director of the licensee. We wavered in the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first time violation for consumption of liquor by an employee, in this case, it was the DJ who's drinking. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Kyujik.
It was the DJ that was drinking, and it's the same promoter.
Oh, no, different. This is a different location, too. We're at three different locations.
Yeah, so it's a different promoter, and we're not using that promoter, right?
Yes.
Some of my folks have a hard time managing promoters and events and different activities and vendors going on.
Uh, no, actually, we are three. Actually, we're at three different locations, so we're three different managers, gonna manage the locations.
And the problem is, the managers are working with different promoters, which we're trying to get the managers not to do anymore.
This, this not happen in one location. Actually, we're three different operations.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, you're responsible.
Right, yes.
So, and, you know, whether it's the promoters or the managers, you're responsible for their conduct.
Yes.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. So, we will recall this, Ms. Choi.
I'm sorry. Oh, oh, no, never mind.
Yeah.
Right, now, can we have Commissioner?
No, no, we're gonna take forty-three.
Let's do forty-three out of order.
We're gonna take what?
Number forty-three, because that's.
Forty-three, okay. Okay, let's call agenda item number forty-three, Mojo Sports Bar and Grill.
Chair, due to our conflict, I'm gonna recuse myself from agenda item number forty-three.
Thank you. Vice Chair Ghanabat.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission. Keith Kyujik for the licensee. To my left is Christopher Allen, middle name spelled A-L-L, and Garcia. He is the manager of Mojo Sports Bar and Grill. We wavered in the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-three, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first time violation for the failure to file an accurate gross liquor sales report. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Kyujik.
Yeah, this is a situation where the accountant was filing gross liquor sales reports only based upon credit card deposits, not based upon all of the deposits. I will also let the commission know that at some point, the actual licensee did not have the records, because he lives on the mainland and Mr. Garcia's managing the bar. We have since gotten all of the records. So, if audit needs any records, we now have the records, at least through the time that Mr. Garcia took over, so it's in a lot better situation than it was before. I wasn't aware until today what the accountant was doing when I talked to the auditor, and we'll correct that.
Ms. Choi.
That's my understanding, the accountant had only the bank deposits, and used those to base the GLS report on, so it wasn't accurate, I mean, it didn't have all the information.
Has it since been corrected? Do we have it?
I can call my auditor to confirm that, because I don't know if it has.
Yes, please.
Sanvong Fila, liquor commission auditor. Um, since my audit, I haven't gone back and checked, so I don't really know.
Okay.
But I'll work with him, because the GLS is due July thirty-first, so I'll work with him on that.
Well, I'm gonna require it, Mr. Kyujik, that we need to have a complete record.
No, I, I understand.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars and require that all gross liquor sales reports be submitted to the commission within thirty days of the decision and order.
Second.
Moved in second, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-three, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved, and the licensee is required to submit all of the gross liquor sales within thirty days after receipt of decision and order.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. Can we have back Commissioner Mia Sherrill?
And Commissioner Ghanabat.
And Vice Chair Ghanabat. Okay, all right, let's call agenda item number forty-two, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Kamalau Market.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners of the Liquor Commission. My name is Adam Shin. To my left is John Shin, owner of Kamalau Market. Would like to enter a no contest.
First, do we reading of the charge?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll just read it real quick. Mr. Shin and Mr. Shin, on, or about February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor, or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam Thomas, at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
And you'd like to enter a no contest plea, is that correct? Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-two, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first time violation, I recommend a fine of a thousand dollars. This is part of our alcohol compliance enforcement program.
Mr. Shin, what happened?
So, I guess, one of the, one of our workers was working, he checked the ID, he, I guess he mischecked it, so he allowed the liquor to sell. From, from there, we installed several surveillance cameras to kind of better the viewing of it, so we have it on our smartphones as well. I download apps on all of the phones, have like ID checker, we can scan IDs, so it kind of tells you if the person is twenty-one or not. We're thinking of also getting a machine on the side to kind of just scan them, just make it easier, instead of you having to check it manually.
Ms. Choi, was this a vertical ID that was presented?
Yes, it was.
Have your employees been trained as to what a vertical versus a horizontal ID means?
Uh, yes.
Okay, when they see a hor, when they see a vertical ID, they should be checking very, very closely, because that means it was issued before that person was twenty-one. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number forty-four, Trade Winslow.
May I reflect Wayne Luke as the attorney and authorized agent for the licensee to waive reading of the charges and their plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first time violation for the failure to file a temporary gross liquor sales report. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars, plus the filing of the gross liquor sales report within fifteen days of the decision and order.
Mr. Luke.
Yeah, well, they, basically, the licensee, the owners are in Japan, they had followed out with the person running things here, that person failed to follow through with the filing. Now, we have a new manager and we have a new accountant. I will try to get it in fifteen days.
Are you going to be able to?
I would like to have thirty days if you can.
Thirty is fine.
No objection.
No objection.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars and require licensee to file the GLS within thirty days of the decision and order. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-four, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved, and the licensee will provide the commission with the gross liquor sales within thirty days after receipt of the decision and order.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number forty-five, request number one nine dash one six eight six oh, Volume Services, Inc., DBA sentecity.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. Thomas Berger for the licensee, and with me to my right is Davi Murayama, M-U-R-A-Y-A-M-A, the general manager for the licensee.
Okay.
This is a request for a pre-hearing conference, correct?
I believe this is the pre-hearing conference.
Yes, we had continued the first pre-hearing conference about two weeks ago today.
Okay.
And I recall, Mr. Berger, there was a request by himself for you to meet and confer with the prosecutor to try to come up with some agreement in terms of the order and process of what this is, exhibits, and any report on that.
Yes, so.
I can explain.
Sure, go ahead.
So, we've, we've come up with a preliminary way of expediting all of the matters, there's, there's gonna be an agreement to, to no contest to a, a good number of the charges, so that it will be a much shorter hearing. But then, there are, are also a couple of charges that are gonna be contested, and we want to continue those to a later date, because there are gonna be additional filings that are gonna be made by center plate. So, I think that when we have the hearings on the eighteenth, we can propose what our, our recommended fine is to, and you can decide at that time, but, but it will be a lot more reduced, I mean, from fifteen to only two contested charges.
So, all of the uncontested charges will be taken up in next week's hearing, and then we'll take up the contested cases at a later date?
Is that correct?
Okay.
Right, so, yeah, we've been working hard with Corporation Council to come up with, um, an agreement where they're gonna be arguing for certain penalties that we are okay with.
Let me state for the record, whatever agreement you make with the prosecutor, this commission will decide the penalties and moving forward, what the issues will be.
And that has been clearly communicated, that it is all subject to the approval of the commission.
That has been clear. Okay, I want that to be perfectly clear. With Mr. Berger, these violations should have not happened, correct? From testimony in the previous matter.
Right, so we have the underage drinking violations, and then we have these obstruction charges.
I don't wanna discuss the violations in particular, we will leave that until we address that agenda item, but I just wanna set the ground rules. Whatever deal the prosecutor recommends, and you accept, only this commission can accept that deal.
Right, let me, we, we fully understand that, yes, and, and the licensee, they really pride themselves on being a responsible corporate citizen, and.
But, I understand, I understand that. That's what you said in two thousand eleven.
Do we need to take any action against?
There is, nonetheless, there is further direction from the commission to either the licensee, Corp. Counsel, or myself, in order to prepare for the eighteen.
I would just recommend, and I appreciate the cooperation and trying to streamline issues for the commission, I would recommend and request that you continue dialogues to, at least that you can continue to streamline issues that we need to decide.
Yes.
Thank you.
And let me also state, we will allow the process to continue in good faith between the prosecutor and the licensee.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we need to go back to Mr. Lee and Mr. Kyujik.
Um, Chair, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Point of, point of procedure, because item number forty, the contested matter, which Commissioner Mia Sherrill will be recusing from, is the last item on the agenda, would he be excusing himself from the meeting as of six-ten, when you leave?
We have to get his parking pass?
I'm ready, I'm ready.
Yep.
So, when you depart, just indicate that you will not be returning from the meeting, so I can mark it on the.
Okay, and for the record, I'm gonna recuse from the next matter, which I understand is agenda forty.
Oh, Ms. Hurai.
Yes.
Can I press a short recess before we move into the contested?
Yeah, can we have a short recess?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we are now back on the record. So, we are on agenda item number?
Forty.
Forty. Calling agenda item number forty, the Ginsa nightclub, Lime Light Karaoke Restaurant.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission. Keith Kyujik for the licensee. To my right is Desmond Lee. We enter a plea of not guilty. My understanding is, there would be no oral testimony, what you have before you is investigative reports, which both parties have stipulated to enter into evidence.
Ms. Choi.
Yes, that's correct. And I can give a summary of what occurred.
Yes.
Yes, please.
So, um, on May twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, our liquor investigators were at Ginsa nightclub doing their inspections for compliance at the Anything is Possible fifteen, eighteen and over event. During their inspection, our investigator Scott Perez had noticed that there was a male patron in one of the karaoke rooms, and he had lit up a joint and smoked it. So, he alerted HPD officer to come in, and then the, it was all documented, and the marijuana was collected and was tested and confirmed as being marijuana. So, we have cited the licensee in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point oh-five A, that says that the possession, distribution, or use of illicit or illegal drugs or narcotics on the licensed premises by any person is prohibited. In this case, the male patron Cory Cocket, he had produced a medical card, but even though it's legal and way for medical purposes, and to be used only at home, it should not be used, or, or even brought on the premises at Ginsa nightclub. So, therefore, they're in violation, and if I, if I can make my argument now.
Go ahead.
You know, this is a question of involving the supremacy clause, so the United States Constitution and the laws of the United States is the supreme law of the land. Under the supremacy clause of the Constitution, when state and federal law conflicts, the federal law displaces or preamps state law. And this is called federal preemption, and it's under Article Six, Section Two of the U.S. Constitution. And this is called federal preemption, and it's under Article Six, Section Two of the U.S. Constitution. Now, under the Controlled Substances Act, you can find it in twenty-one U.S. Code, Section eight one two, marijuana is a Schedule One controlled substance. And it's one of the most strictly regulated because of its addictive characteristics. So therefore, we still find that this prohibition under three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point oh five applies and that, that the licensee should still be held in violation of the rule.
Thank you.
The licensee's position is that Cory Crockett, uh, when asked for his identification, produced both a state ID and a Department Health Medical Cannabis Program card. Uh, state law allows the consumption and possession of marijuana provided you have a Department Health Medical Cannabis Program card. Uh, I do not think that the, uh, federal law applies because this is not, uh, federal property. And the federal, uh, federal authorities were not involved in the investigation or any arrest of Mr. Crockett. Mr. Crockett was, uh, was released by HPD. No arrests were made, as the report indicates, once he produced his medical cannabis program card. So under Hawaii law, we would assert that he was allowed to possess and consume marijuana because he had a card. If he had passed the joint to somebody else, that's a different circumstance. But those aren't the, the facts that occurred here. So the question is whether what he did individually constitutes a violation of law and therefore results in a violation to the licensee in this case. Because HPD did not arrest him because he had the Medical Cannabis Program card. He did not commit an offense of law and therefore the licensee should not be prosecuted.
Mr. Kiu Chi, do you stipulate to that, uh, Mr. Crockett, um, used? In other words, he lit?
Yes.
The marijuana on the premises?
Yes, that's not an issue.
That's.
If you look at the report on page two, it specifically says that Mr. Crockett brought the small joint to his mouth and took a drink from the joint. So it's, it's in the report. I'm not contest what's in here.
Anything further?
No.
You'd be need to executive session to deliberate?
Motion to convene to executive session.
Second.
Moved in second. We are now in the executive session. Okay, thank you. We are now back on official record. Commissioners, do we have a, uh, decision on, um, agenda item number forty?
Yes, Chair. Due to the use of the marijuana, uh, my motion is to find the licensee in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero five subsection A of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
All those in favor?
I need a second.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, agenda item number forty, we find the licensee, uh, in violation of the rule.
Ms. Choi, your recommendation.
First-time violation, I recommend a fine of $1,000.
I think the commission is pretty aware the facts have been read in the report, so I got nothing else to add.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Change the item number forty, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kiu Chi, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
And Mr. Lee, you know, the commission, as well as yourselves, spent a lot of time here this evening on violations that could have been avoided. Um, a lot of time, a lot of, um, these violations have gone on for quite a period of time, from one day to another day, with several, from one violation here to another, ranging of just operational, um, flaws. And you've, you've claimed that there's three vendors and your partners or you cannot get it together. There has to be one person who is you, who is responsible, who ultimately is gonna pay these fines, that has to be responsible enough to say that this is how I wanna operate my business and this is how the longevity of my business will operate because it cannot continue this way. And we hope not to see you here again and spend seven o'clock at night or spend dinner here with you. So we're hoping that this is a eye-opener for you and a possibly a business reorg and figure out procedurally. And please meet with Mr. Kiu Chi. I'm sure he's aware of how you can improve your business and how to stay out of trouble.
And I will remind you that we do have the authority to suspend or revoke your license for any of these charges or for all of them.
I, I thank you for your comments. I have too long meetings with them. I'm sure I'll have others.
Thank you.
I, I think that's, that's well said.
And we, I mean, I've cautiously chosen my words on it. But I think this commission has been patient to hear everything here. And at the end, we expect you to just be a responsible business owner and licensee.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number forty-six. Do we have any administrative matter? Meeting isn't adjourned.